6:00 PM on Tuesday, April 12th. Roll call, please.
Mike Matherley.
Here.
Tracy Pugh.
Here.
Dave Rockwell.
Here.
Gary Rowe.
Here.
Megan Wilson.
Here.
Terrell Williams.
Here.
Approval of the Board of Education minutes. There is a revision to this. It is recommended that the Board of Education approves the minutes of the special board meetings of March 29th, 2022, including the executive session minutes. So we are removing the meeting from March 22nd, 2022, as they were not included in the package. But that'll entertain a motion for that revised item.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Terrell Williams.
Yes.
Gary Rowe.
Yes.
Tracy Pugh.
Yes.
Dave Rockwell.
Yes.
Megan Wilson.
Yes.
Mike Matherley.
Yes. Okay, and revisions to the agenda. We do have a couple items of note. Dr. Lawrence, I believe it was, item I, personnel, letter L, Heidi Nieru. We are removing her from item L and moving her to item I. Other than that revision, I am proposing that we move personnel of the agenda to before the operations items. So immediately following the link. And then we are adding, I thought that's right, right here, on item nine, personnel, letter E. Adding in the poll.
Item.
He goes.
You don't, you don't.
Bill on that.
I hope that's.
All right. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for agenda as revised. She'll move second. Properly moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Megan Wilson.
Yes.
Gary Rowe.
Yes.
Terrell Williams.
Yes.
Dave Rockwell.
Yes.
Tracy Pugh.
Yeah.
Mike Matherley.
Yes. And on to item two, special item, winter sports student athlete recognition. We will hand that off to Mr. Hammer and Roman Athletic Director.
So we do have a bunch of our winter sports coaches here. Had a lot of success in the winter. Kind of a new and a different role for me. Kind of getting things moving along until Ms. Ramendorfer gets here. I'm going to present for boys' basketball to begin with. It was Coach Paul's anniversary today, so he couldn't make it. Understandably so. So to start off, Amarion Nimmers was the Illinois pace setter, was Western Big Six All-Conference, first team Chicago Sun-Times All-State First Team. He was the second time all-time leading scorer at Rock Island behind Jason Randall, school record for points in a game, school record for points in a season. Illinois AP Boys All-State Basketball Second Team, Iowa-Illinois All-Star Team, Illinois Basketball Coaches Association All-State Second Team. IHSA Academic Athlete with a GPA of 3.5 or higher, Western Big Six Scholastic All-Conference with a GPA of 3.25 or higher. Quad Cities All-Metro Player of the Year and Quad Cities All-Metro First Team. And Amarion was a senior this year. Amarion Anderson, who was also a senior, Western Big Six All-Conference Second Team, Iowa-Illinois All-Star Team. Illinois Basketball Coaches Association All-State Team, Special Mention, Quad Cities All-Metro Second Team. Baker Beal, who was also a senior, Western Big Six All-Conference Basketball Team Honorable Mention, Iowa-Illinois All-Star Team. Quad Cities All-Metro Team Honorable Mention. Kai Rios, also a senior, IHSA Academic Athlete. GPA of 3.5 or higher, Western Big Six Scholastic All-Conference with a GPA of 3.25 or higher. Kareem Hunter, another senior, IHSA Academic Athlete with a GPA of 3.5 or higher, Western Big Six Scholastic All-Conference with a GPA of 3.25 or higher. Jalen Randall, also a senior, Western Big Six Scholastic All-Conference with a GPA of 3.25 or higher. Quad Cities All-Metro Team Honorable Mention. And last but not least, Cameron Atkinson, who was a junior, is Quad Cities All-Metro Honorable Mention. I know Coach Paul is watching at home and we look forward to seeing him replace all of those seniors. Up next, we have girls' basketball. But before that, I know we're not supposed to bring them here, and I'm stealing a little bit of Coach Stockwell's thunder, but I haven't gotten to do it face-to-face in front of a lot of people yet. Congratulations, Archie.
Let's see, hello. I am not Henry Hall. I'm Lady Rocks freshman coach, Mike Randall. I'm here representing Henry Hall and the staff. He couldn't make it today. For the Lady Rocks, we have, first off, Amari Duffy. She's a senior, Western Big Six All-Conference Girls Basketball First Team. Illinois AP Girls All-State Basketball Team Honorable Mention, IHSA Academic Athlete with a GPA of 3.5 or higher. Quad Cities All-Metro Girls Basketball First Team, Western Big Six Scholastic All-Conference Western with a GPA of 3.25 or higher. That was a lot. Kayla Rice, she's a junior, Western Big Six All-Conference Girls Basketball Second Team, IHSA Academic Athlete with GPA of 3.5 or higher. Quad City All-Metro Girls Basketball Team Honorable Mention. Then we have Bree Stewart. She's a, she's a, they got her as a junior. She's a senior. Western Big Six All-Conference Girls Basketball Second Team, Quad Cities All-Metro Girls Basketball Team Honorable Mention. Then we got Emily Allison. She's a senior, IHSA Academic Athlete with a GPA of 3.5 or higher. Western Big Six Scholastic All-Conference with GPA of 3.25 or higher. Danae Robinson, she's a junior, Quad City All-Metro Girls Basketball Team Honorable Mention. Mackenzie Murhagie, she's a junior as well, IHSA Academic Athlete with a GPA of 3.5 or higher. Tamaya Jamison, junior, IHSA Academic Athlete with a GPA of 3.5 or higher. Mariah McQueen, IHSA Academic Athlete with GPA of 3.5 or higher. Area B, she's a junior, IHSA Academic Athlete with GPA of 3.5 or higher. And Kanaya Davis, senior, Western Big Six Scholastic All-Conference Western with a GPA of 3.25 or higher.
Change of plans. I'm at Nathan. Coach Bray's going to do the boys' and girls' bowling together for swimming. I'd like to thank the school board and Bob Beckwith for finding us a place to swim this year as the Rock Island pool got shut down. And then we moved to the Augustana College Old Pool, and then that became inoperable after two weeks. So then they moved this to the Augustana New Pool. So we kind of had a hectic season, no home meets, we're on the road a lot, but the guys persevered. I know it was hard. We didn't have some great practice times as we were kind of the third choice there, but guys did a good job. They stuck with it, and it was just kind of a different season for all of them. We did have some good success. Lucas Reddick is junior, was Western Big Six All-Conference MVP voted on by the coaches at the conference swim meet. He was also Western Big Six All-Conference First Team, winning both the 100 Butterfly and the 100 Backstroke. He was IHSA Academic Athlete, GPA of 3.5 or higher, was also Quad Cities All-Metro Boys Swim Team First Team. Bailey, a senior, was IHSA Academic Athlete with a GPA of 3.5 or higher. He was also Western Big Six Scholastic All-Conference with a GPA of 3.25 or higher. And I think the big award for him, he made the National His Scholastic Swim Coaches of America Academic All-American Team with a GPA of 3.75 or above. Julian Anderson, junior, IHSA Academic Athlete with GPA of 3.5 or higher. We also had Chris So, a junior, IHSA Academic Athlete with GPA of 3.5 or higher. And Julian Lopez, a sophomore, made the Quad Cities All-Metro Boys Swim Team Honorable Mention. And we didn't have a big team, but we had a lot of our guys make academic awards this year, so very proud of all of them. Thank you.
I'll start with the boys. And for the boys, this is actually our first full season. This is the third year. The first year, we started a little late. Last year, of course, COVID didn't give us many meets, so this was their first full year. They did well. They have a good group coming back. I think we had like 17 young men out, and I would say those 17, maybe one or two were in other sports. I think it was a good addition because these are people not involved in other activities. So it was a very good addition for us. And we did have, we struggled with grades a little bit. We're going to work on that next year, but we did have one bowler, Nathan Hendricks. He was an IHSA Academic Athlete with a GPA of 3.5 or higher. For the girls, I'll leave these if the board members would like to look at them. That's a little overview of our season at the end of the year. I always put that together and pass those out at our banquet. Now, for the girls, we had a great season this year, better than expected. I just want to say, looking at Megan, you know you're old when one of the school board members was in your third grade class. So I'm feeling old today. For the girls, we had a good season. We were nine and two in dual matches. We won the conference meet. We were second in the regional. We were fourth in the sectional and qualified for state. We had a young lady who made it to the grand final day. She was in 12th place and then kind of ran out of steam. 12 games in two days is a lot of games. And she was having some injury problems dealing with a bat, so I think had she been a little stronger, we might have made it, she might have made it higher. And she bowled the second highest game. She had the first 10 strikes. She bowled a 287, which was the second high game at the state meet also. So we had an outstanding season. And hopefully, we can repeat that next year. Second time in a row, we were conference champions. Okay, first, we'll start with Carly Gordon. She's a senior, and she was also voted by the coaches as the Big Six MVP Bowler this year. She was Western Big Six All-Conference First Team, state qualifier. She did get the IHSA Academic Award. She also did have the Western Big Six Scholastic All-Conference Award. That one's Carly Gordon, and she is moving on and going to bowl at Cole College. Secondly, we have Olivia Shaw. She was honored earlier today at the Rotary Club. Olivia Shaw, she's also related to me, unfortunately for her, but she will be going on to bowl, going on to swim, not bowl. Yeah, Minnesota State College. She was an outstanding swimmer, but she also was a very good addition to our bowling team. She was IHSA Academic Athlete, also a Western Big Six All-Conference Second Team. She also had the Western Big Six Academic Award. Junior Mackenzie Terry, she also received the IHSA Academic Award. Anna Ramirez, a senior, she received the IHSA Academic Award and the Western Big Six Academic Award. Phoebe Fuller, she received the IHSA Academic Award and the Western Big Six Academic Award. And also, she was the Booster Club Athlete of the Month this month. Maybe see her name flashed on our sign. And then finally, another junior, Bailey Hecker, was also a good, outstanding swimmer. She did get the IHSA Academic Athlete and also the Western Big Six Athlete, and she was All-Conference Second Team. So that was girls' bowling. Thank you.
All right. I'm Joel Stockwell, the wrestling coach. I also would like to thank the school board and, you know, the administration and the taxpayers because the more successful the season has, the more expensive it is, you know, rooms and transportation and all that, and things have been crazy with COVID. You know, used to be able to take a couple hundred dollar vans or a couple hundred dollar bus, turned into a thousand dollar, you know, coach bus because there was nothing else available. You know, and nobody ever called me, said, what are you doing? You know, so I was just waiting for those calls. But so I appreciate the taxpayers and the administration for supporting us. We had a really successful year this year. I know we weren't supposed to bring anybody, but I just, I couldn't not bring them. You know, we got, it's only my second state champ, state champ since I've been coaching, so I brought Alche Bernard. You see that smile? It's all worth it, right? So, you know, he was a class 2A, you know, state champion. So our last one was BJ McGee 10 years ago. So hopefully we won't have that long with drought, but you know, it was nice to have that. He was a sectional champ, regional champ. He's All-Metro First Team. Big Six All-Conference Second Team. And he also recorded, set a record for 51 individual wins, which is school records. So it's awesome. He'll be signing here, on signing day with St. Cloud State, which is a D2. They've won nationals like five of the last eight years, so he's going to a really solid college program as well. So looking for big things to continue on for him. All right. Then we have TruBC. He's a sophomore. He was Quad Cities All-Metro Second Team, Big Six First Team. He was regional champ. He was a state qualifier as a sophomore. All right. Rebecca Ferguson, she was Western Big Six All-Conference GPA, I'm sorry, Academic All-Conference with a GPA of 3.25 or higher. She was also, she was going to come too. I was going to bring her secret in too, but she couldn't come. Fifth place, IHSA State Medal as well. And this year was the first year ever for it to be IHSA sanctioned girl state. So she's the inaugural, you know, state placer for Rocky, for girls, state placer for Rocky. Sanaa Hampton. Sanaa Hampton, also a girl. She was a state qualifier. She in place, but she was a state qualifier. So we got two state qualifiers and we got a medal with the first girl state, so we're pretty excited about that. Steven Marquez, junior, he was All-Metro First Team, Western Big Six All-Conference First Team, and he was also a state qualifier. Samuel Nunez Carrum, he was All-Metro, All-Metro Honorable Mention, Western Big Six All-Conference Second Team, and also a state qualifier. This is his second year for being a state qualifier. Dan McGee was All-Metro, you know, wrestling team honorable mention. He was Big Six Conference Second Team. He's only a sophomore. Matthew Cook, junior, All-Metro Wrestling Team Honorable Mention, Western Big Six All-Conference Second Team. Andrew Marquez, sophomore, Quad Cities All-Metro Wrestling Team Honorable Mention, First Team, Western Big Six. That's not on there, but it should be. And then Eli Gassson, also sophomore, All-Metro Wrestling Team Honorable Mention. And then we had a senior manager, Ashley Hagan, who is part of the IHSA Academic, you know, GPA 3.5 or higher. And she's also the Western Big Six Scholastic All-Conference with a GPA of 3.25 or higher. And then to finish up, just give me, I'm going to read a long list of names here. We had 21 wrestlers. We made it to state, made it to Elite Eight. And that's the farthest we've made since I've been here. It's last time Rocky made an appearance at the Wrestling State Duels was 20 years ago. So 20 years ago, then 10 years ago. So hopefully we don't have those long withdrawals. But anyways, I just wanted to read their names. Josh Ferentz, Sanaa Hampton, Angel Coranza, Will Valanga, Amariangay, Merrick Stockwell, Matthew Cook, Tristan Willoughby, Israel McGowan, Dominic Ekman-Ardar, Victor Duarte, Rebecca Ferguson, Dan McGee, Amari Overton, Ian Marshall, Steven Marquez, Andrew Marquez, Eli Gassson, Sammy Neocru, Tyler Barbie, and Alche Bernard. And then we had four managers, Cassie Ingles, Ashley Hagan, Willie Gonzalez, Alejandro Zatina. So, you know, we preach rest. Most, you know, most people think of wrestling as an individual sport, but it's individual and team. And that's what, you know, it's so unique about the sport and what I love about it. So we talk a lot about team and, you know, making sacrifices for the team. And I don't know, I was just really proud of these guys for making all the sacrifices. It's hard to get that many kids to buy in, and that's why we only had 21. 21, you know, because most teams are bigger than that. But, you know, we got 21 to buy in, and it followed along with what we want to do, and we made it, right?
Thank you. I haven't even pulled the 287 series, let alone. Move on to reports. Board members. Mr. Williams, start with you, please.
No report.
Don't start with him because I haven't been able to.
All right, we will not start with Mr. Williams.
Mr. Rockwell. I know. Mr. Rowe. Just a quick one. District Leadership Team, it'll be a longer report for the cabinet. Pardon me, but a couple of highlights. Every school now has a building leadership team. Average attendance is 82%. Great metrics. And something that's exciting, although people are obviously from the cabinet, but we had students express an interest in a barbary class from the Career Education Center at East Mulley. 52 students signed up. They're all from Rock Island High School, so that will be at Rock Island High School next year. So this is the leader of our best team, not a report of water and such, but yeah. And then Black Friday special, head district. They're looking for an open classroom or school somewhere in the west head district, if anybody knows such a thing. They're gearing up for an inter-district program for students on the autism spectrum. And then finally, there's teaching planning process. So that's.
Mr. Pugh.
We had a great career day. But I want to give thanks to all the people who keep the school district safe, you know, teachers, you know, principal, vice principal, deans, security, all the staff. If one of you guys, kids would have a safe place, I would like to thank y'all for doing a good job helping the school district.
All right. Well, it's good to see all of you people here. Love that. And thank you for coming tonight with Archie.
Archie.
Archie. Um, I just would like to say that the Educated of the Year Celebration last Friday at the Center is pretty amazing. I wish that, you know, every single teacher in the district could be there. You guys were definitely thought about, but each school, one teacher was chosen, and it was a really beautiful event to recognize, you know, one teacher from each building. So I just wanted to, you know, tell the administration everyone's involved with that great job. And then also, it is about that time of the year for scholarships and awards being given out and things like that. So I've already picked, been a part of choosing the Harvard Rock recipients, so looking forward to handing out some scholarships and all those things and all of our seniors.
Are we connected back to the interweb yet?
Not yet.
No?
All right.
Not yet. I'm waiting. I think that's overheated, so I'm trying to get it to come back up.
The light just came on.
Yep.
For me, over this past weekend, Saturday night, I attended the dance marathon put on by the Rock Island Super Council. And it was kind of the, it was the culmination of their weeks-long effort to raise money for the Children's Miracle Network, which was part of St. Ambrose efforts we then donated to the University of Iowa Children's Hospital, which is an amazing medical resource that we have here in this close proximity of the Quad Cities. My family's benefited personally from it and know the good work that they do. But what was heartwarming, we'll say to me, Saturday night, one, it was a Saturday night, and there were kids, students that opted to come to a fundraiser dance and participate in shenanigans put on by the staff members and the sponsors from the high school, and also St. Ambrose students who gave up their Saturday night. Maybe it got over early enough where it probably was Saturday night, but I don't know. But the students gave up their Saturday night to be there to raise money for what's a great cost. And the student council ended up raising, I think it was $7,300, give or take ballpark, is what they ended up raising to contribute to St. Ambrose to then give it over to the University of Iowa. So to the students of the high school, to the sponsors, the student council, the administration, everybody that put on that event and all the other events. Thank you for that. It was, it was great to see, and it was great to be there and be a part of it. So Mr. Williams, are you with us?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Would you like to give your report, please?
Yep. I made an impromptu trip home this weekend from DC. Unfortunately, not to attend Educated of the Year Banquet, but to attend the Love Awards, which is an event that honors young women in our community for their talents, their accomplishments, and struggles that they overcome. And I'm highlighting this one because it's a good event, so if you hear about it next year, please attend. But we had a couple of students from our district honored within, honored at this event. And obviously, I came home, my kids were involved in the event, but there were some other young, young, beautiful women who came out and showed out and showed what it means to be a rock at this event. So I was very inspired and very moved by everything that I saw this weekend and hope we encourage to hope we continue to encourage and empower young ladies to be all that they can be in our community, so.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Dr. Lawrence?
I'll keep it brief because you heard a lot of my report earlier, but I do want to just talk about the Rover Club today. Not only recognized a couple of our students with their annual academic recognition. We also have one of our staff, Monsieur Edwards, who's recognized, and Coach Bray was recognized with the Excellence Award. So we also had our junior board at Rock Island, who received community services where a number of our instructional coaches served in the past. So it was really a big sweep for Rock Island. And I never, it never ceases amazing for our students and our staff and community members. Last piece I'll add is that tomorrow we have a trade show going on at Rock Island High School, 3:30 to 5 o'clock, 3 to 5. It's open to all of our high school students in the U C. Come and hear about some trades. I can think about everything. I can do everything up here, but if I could take these and build stuff with hammers and saws and everything, I'd rather be a different thing. So that starts tomorrow, 3:30, 5:30, and also want to open up to the board members that get there at 3:30 tomorrow. And I'm opt-in to walk with Chuck, so with the hard hat, I want to get a chance to just go and see some construction that's going on at the high school.
Dr. Lawrence, can I ask you a share about Monday?
Oh.
The waiver and then the apprenticeship.
Absolutely. So Monday, probably had information going home to families and such, but Monday, if you're 18, is going to be it's a day, we can see the waiver from the state so that we can use it to professional development with our staff. So it will not be a student day, so students will be off home on Monday. However, we as student staff will have a chance to be there and just continue doing professional development, looking at data, getting ready, getting, getting completed for this year and looking at today's. So it'll be a day where students are off. And then last piece, Dr. Ruckler shared. And then last piece that Dr. Ruggerber shared. Which piece is that, Dr. Ruggerber?
The Quad City High School Student Friendship Signing Day.
Oh, that's coming up on the, the 20th, April 20th. This year we had a chance to do this with both Illinois and Iowa. We get a chance to have all these students here that are part of those signings for, of this work for John here, or working with other organizations and businesses. It's a signing date for them. So we'll definitely be representing students that are from the community point, as well as John here, working from Raston, TMS. Signing. Our students are learning other skill sets and want to be prepared for college career and life. It's just an example and opportunity to lots of stuff.
All right, EA President, Mr. Andrew Haines.
No reports.
No reports. Under Communications, do we have any requests from community members for agenda or non-agenda items?
No, I've never received anything.
We will move on to the Blankets. Action for Routine Matters, A request for future agenda items.
I have one request. Mr. Butler was going to do a safety security plan for the district. It's been in that position for a while now. I'll just get an update on that.
Any other items? Onto the blanket motion. Are there any items, any board member wishes to have removed from the blanket?
I have one there, Mike. I have six schoolwork travel conferences.
With that, are there any other items? I will entertain a motion for approving the blanket motion with the exception of item number six, for more travel for conference. Properly moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Tracy Q?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Mike Mather?
Yes.
Gary's, all right. Onto item. Five, B, six of the items from the Blankets, school board travel for conference. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the attendance at the National Alliance of Black School Educators Conference for Mr. Terrell Williams and Dr. Tiffany Stoner Harris in National Harbor, Maryland, November 30th, December 4th. And estimate a cost of $4,001.32 buying total. I entertain a motion. Properly moved and seconded. Roll call, please. So any discussion?
Yeah, since I brought this up, I would discuss it. Both step down this month for the Dr. Stoner Harris to stand and attend meetings and personnel, must attend the conference. And I can't take that logical connection in my head. So I will vote against this. For that reason.
Any other discussion? With that, roll call, please.
Tracy Q?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
No.
Mike Mather?
Yes.
And now we are going to move on to the Personnel items, moving them up the agenda in front of Operations. So with that, we will move to item A under Personnel. Recommendation for the 2022, 2023 Student Intervention Administrator at Rock Island High School. It is recommended Board of Education through Lorelei and Deedel. Is that right?
That's both.
And Deedel.
For the position of Student Intervention Administrator for the 2022, 2023 school year at salary of $106,553. I'll entertain a motion.
A move, second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any discussion items on this? Properly moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Dave Rockwell.
Sorry, yes?
Yeah, no, I, I had a hard time hearing you. What are we, what are we voting on? Because I know you moved some things around on the agenda.
Oh, yes. So we are voting, we're at the Personnel. We moved that up. We have a, a large presence here for Personnel items. So we moved that up in front of Operations and we are on A, the Student Intervention Administrator. It has been properly moved and seconded. Do you want to discuss it on, Mr. Williams?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't have any need to discuss. I just know historically we've gone and talked about these things, but if people are good, good on the recommendations, I'm, I'm good on the recommendations, so.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Tracy Q?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yep.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Mike Mather?
Yes.
Item B.
I know when you have a couple names, I know that we tend to bring individuals up and introduce them. And so I don't know if we're going to try and do the bulk thing, but I think everybody needs to get their individual kudos. So come on up.
I'm excited to be home.
You get a chance to take a picture together, too, so.
Oh, okay. Should I sit down?
I'll be top. Confidence, you gotta have confidence. Board President, make sure you write that.
I'm going to get credit that she waited until after our vote. All right. Personnel, B, recommendation for the 2022, 2023 Rock Island Center of Math and Science Principal. It is recommended the Board of Education approve John Holly for the position of the Rick Miss Principal for the 2223 school year at salary of $116,501. Second, properly moved and seconded. Any discussion on this topic? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Tracy Q?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Mike Mather?
Yes.
So congratulations, Mr. Holly.
Hello, Mr. Holly? Got unmuted, sir.
I did.
There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, I am, I am with you from Phoenix, Arizona. My daughter just got married on Sunday, so I'm on vacation here. But I just want to thank you for the opportunity and I'm really excited to join the Rocks slash Tornadoes team.
We take the picture when you get here. How tall are you, by the way?
I'm not quite as tall as Lorelei in heels.
There's going to be a new question on our app. All right. Personnel, C, recommendation for the 2022, 2023 Eugene Field Elementary Principal. It is recommended the Board of Education approve Jennifer Alangi, 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 for the position of Eugene Field Principal for the 2022, 2023 school year at salary of $116,501.
So moved, second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, we will do a roll call.
Tracy Q?
Yes.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Mike Mather?
Yes.
You already see out of that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Letter D, recommendation for the 2022, 2023 Athletic Director. To start May 2nd, it was recommended the Board of Education approve Michael Emendorfer to begin work as the Rock Island High School Athletic Director, Monday, May 2nd, at a per diem rate of $431.68. Second, it's properly moved and seconded. Any discussion on this item?
Just one question on the per diem. Is it, is it working days or seven days a week?
Working days.
Working days.
Working days.
Okay. No other questions?
Very good. It is properly moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Tracy Q?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Mike Mather?
Yes.
Okay. Item E, teachers completing partial year of service. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the following list of first-year probationary teachers that shall not be re-employed for the 2022, excuse me, 2023 school year because they were hired after the first day of school. Therefore, employment will terminate at the end of the 2122 school year. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Tracy Q?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Mike Mather?
Yes.
Teachers completing part-time contracts. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the following list of one teacher that shall not be re-employed for the 2223 school year because they worked part-time. Therefore, their employment will end at the conclusion of the 2122 school year.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Tracy Q?
I'm going to have a hard time. No.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Dave Rockwell?
Yeah.
Mike Mather?
Yes.
Item G, teachers completing one-year probationary services. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the following first-year probationary teachers not be re-employed for the 2223 school year. Therefore, their employment will terminate at the end of 2122 school year.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Tracy Q?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Mike Mather?
Yes.
H, teachers completing two years of probationary service. It is recommended Board of Education approve the following second-year probationary teachers not be re-employed for the 2223 school year. Therefore, their employment will terminate at the end of 2122 school year.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Discussion on this item?
Yeah, Mike, just to clarify, these, these are teachers who have completed a third year of teaching in our district and we're opting not to bring them back for a fourth? Is that correct?
That's a payment. The item that we're currently on is teachers completing two years of service and not being brought back for a third year.
Okay. So we're, we're on H.
We're on H, right.
And again, this is, a lot of this is just process and you just.
Yeah, so just the ones that you previously, it is a procedure like part-time employees, employees that started late. It's an automatic non-renewal. You will see some of these employees recalled, but as a hiring manager, they'll do that. That's our, this is our procedure. Board has to take action on this. And then starting tomorrow, you'll see hiring managers push recalls just based on procedures. So every year we, we go through a lot of these.
So in the case that we approve and then there's a recall that happens, does that teacher then restart their tenure process or do they pick up where they left off?
No, they, they, they pick up where they left off. As long as employees or teachers worked 120 days, they earn seniority and they will just continue. There will be no break in the contract. Procedurally, you are moving through on actions. Some of them may not be asked back, majority will. And there will be no break in their employment. What says?
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Tracy Q?
No.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Mike Mather?
Yes.
Letter I. Teachers completing three years probationary service. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the following list of third-year probationary teachers that shall not be re-employed for the 2223 school year. Therefore, their employment shall terminate at the end of 2122 school.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Tracy Q?
No.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
No.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
And Mike Mather?
Yes.
J, non-certified staff to be released due to non-renewal. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the following list of 31 non-certified employees that shall not be re-employed for the 2223 school year. Therefore, their employment shall terminate at the end of 2122 school year. It has been properly moved and seconded. Discussion on this item?
I, I will say, this is right up, almost all these non-certified people you can hire to everything, you're a good starter. And a huge number of them come back. And I understand procedures, I'm going to follow procedure, but I complained about this before when we know, we know they're not coming. And we, we know they're coming back. It wasn't for the state.
Other discussion on this item? Has been properly moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Tracy Q?
No.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Mike Mather?
Yes.
Letter K is an informational item. The administration recommends the list of 22 personnel who have completed their probationary period in the Rock Island Mountain School District, 41, and close up to 2122 school year, be placed on tenure beginning with the 2223 school year. Informational. Informational item, there is no action taken. Letter L, uh, administrators' teachers' contracts after three years of service. This is an informational item. The administration recommends. That a list of thirty-eight personnel who have completed three years of probationary status. At the close of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, be issued a contract for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh, the twenty-two, twenty-three year will be their fourth year of status towards ten. Onto letter M.
Hey, Mike.
Yes, sir.
On this, can we have Egan just come up and reiterate why this is a procedural matter?
Sure.
So the question is, uh, tenure is a procedural matter? Does my understand the question? Yeah, so the state tenure is a machine that moves no matter what. So any certified staff in the state of Illinois, once they've earned tenure, it automatically goes forward. The board is informed of those employees who are getting tenure. So you are getting this information. That's why there's no action taken informational. Um, but tenure cannot be stopped unless it's stopped through evaluation or through the non-tenure, non-renewal process. Otherwise, it continues to move forward. That explain it well?
I mean, I, I think the way I interpret the question is why, why does it need to be an agenda item if it's just informational?
Sure, uh, in the past, uh, the board, previous boards have asked for that and so that's why we want to let you know.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Williams?
Uh, I didn't have a question, but, but sure, the information was helpful.
Oh, okay, absolutely. Letter M. An informational item, administrators' teachers' contracts after two years of service. The administration recommends the list of twenty-four personnel who have completed two years of probationary status. At the close of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, issue a contract for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. That will be their third year towards ten. Onto letter N. It's administrators' teachers' contracts after one year of service. The administration recommends the list of twenty personnel who have completed one year probationary status. At the close of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, be issued a contract for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Which will be their second year of status towards tenure. Excellent.
Also. I was, no.
Don't leave.
It's just.
And that concludes the personnel section. So then we'll move back. We'll, we'll give a minute.
Everybody wants to leave.
Thank you for coming.
Six fifty-two, Seattle. We can have quiet, please. All right, now we are moving on to operations, which is Roman numeral six. Prior to the amendment on the agenda. Maybe it's officially Roman numeral seven, I'm not sure. Uh, the operations, A, strategic quarterly plan report. Uh, the members of the cabinet and DLT will share the quarter three report of the district strategic plan.
Sure, uh, good evening. I know that, uh, the document. Isn't that one stream behind this shit? Uh, but this is our opportunity to just share, uh, updated data with respect to strategic plan. Third quarter, uh, there were a few areas where, where there were some updates in data. But very similar to quarter one, uh, where, you know, a lot of academic data and such. Uh, there were, there wasn't any new data. We know that there'll be spring assessments coming forward. So I'll just try and, uh, I will share the document for you to, uh, to have at your leisure. Uh, just go over a couple of the areas where there were some improvements. I don't know if we, we have the. Oh, we're looking for it right now, okay. Well, I can tell you that in, uh, in priority area one, which really focuses on, uh. Communication with DLT and DLT information. Uh, that was an area where we saw a slight improvement with the number of our schools. One that have operating, uh, DLTs, as you heard, all of our schools have a DLT. Uh, that they meet, uh, regularly each quarter. Uh, however, when it comes to having the, the ninety percent breakdown of, um. Having specific number of community members, parents, students and such, that's still an area that, uh. A number of our schools and even our DLT is working towards meeting in the future. Uh, I know in my first year here as far as, uh, with the DLT, we were fortunate enough to have a couple of high school students. So maybe our meeting time, met their schedule, they had vehicles so they could get there, be a part of the meeting. Uh, for, uh, for DLT and for just a number of our schools, they're still working on, um. Trying to ensure that they have parent representation and community members on their teams. So that's an area that when you look at the, uh, uh, at this report, it's still an area where we're marked yellow. Meaning that we want to be both the attendance rate and, uh, the participation type rates. As we communicate with our DLT and DLT. Uh, so you'll see that that's an area that we still would make yellow and we'll continue to work for, moving forward to get to next year. With respect to, uh, staff, student. Climate survey information, uh, we don't have any updates for that information just yet. We are getting into the spring, um, the spring portion of taking our climate survey. And we hope that every staff, student, parent, everyone will take the survey and take it seriously. So that we have some, some pre and post, um, information to come, to compare and look at. Took it in the fall, we want to take it here in the spring and then be able to go back and see just how our students, uh, staff and parents. Rate our schools and rate our district and how it performs. So we'll move into the next priority area again, which is around academics achievement. And Dr. Rockford will give a little bit of insight, but we're the ones like quarter three.
Yes, so the only area here that we have to chat about is course enrollment. So just a reminder there, we're looking for rigorous higher level courses. Making sure that we open equitable opportunities for all students to enroll in those courses. Some preliminary information that has to occur before we get here is the removal of barriers from the course catalog. So years ago, it used to be you had to have a certain grade to be put into any AP honors, dual credit, et cetera course, and we've removed those barriers. Now with its, the inception of Avid, we have built in some supports. We'll continue to build in more supports as we work towards. The future, um, discussion around graduation requirements, more supports that open up in, in student schedules. As well as just supports throughout the school building to make sure that students and parents know that we're committed to helping you take whatever coursework you'd like to take. So in here, we, we combine honors, AP, dual credit, project lead the way, Avid, but a student only counts one time. So if I'm in AP English and a dual credit English course, I only count one time. So we stayed green as we have fifty course options between seventh and twelfth grade. And our enrollment stayed very consistent. So we were consistent from semester one to semester two, including in our ethnicity and gender breakdown. The only change, it was less than a one percent difference between semester one and two with gender and ethnicity breakdown. And just over a one percent difference between special education and English learner students. From semester one to semester two, we had an increase of about one and a half of special education students. And from semester one to two, we had about one and a half decrease in English learner students. But still relatively similar, a one percent increase is still very good, uh, and decrease. And so we want to celebrate that our students are taking these honors courses. Thank you for approving last month the honor science course, which will add this to the next year's strategic plan report.
And then I would just add under the disciplinary referrals in that we've been looking at them quarter one and quarter two and now quarter three. Our number of incidents have been going down as the quarters go. What we need, our next steps right now is working with that discipline team and looking at what should be our baseline. So that as we go into next year, are we making gains? Are we in the green? Are we, you know, meeting our goal in that? But truly looking at where the incidents are happening and what the incident infractions are. We do know that when we look at our out-of-school suspension summary. In the K-six, we have fifty-four students that attribute to the hundred and fifty-two incidents. And then we have a big jump in the ninth and twelfth grade where we see eighty-seven students. Our middle school at the seven, eight, only eleven students have had those incident infractions during quarter three. So we know we have work that we are working with the high school, looking at those true incidents and infractions and really looking at. Does the out-of-school suspensions match the discipline that is happening in that? We've had a number of incidences we are looking at with fighting and looking at what are some next steps that we are looking at? As well as we've had some weapon violations, we've had some drug violations and that. But looking at those things and what steps do we need to help support and put in place at that high school? One of the things we are looking at is an additional support of a school social worker next year for that ninth grade class. Because we do, we're following some of those students. We have ninety-six special ed students going into the freshman class next year. And we also want to keep on track with the persistence of graduation with these students as well.
How does that ninety-sixth pair?
Ninety-six, we typically are sending around forty-eight students. And this is a track of students we've been following for five years now and this has been growing. We were anticipating around eighty-three. We've had a huge increase with move-ins from other districts this year. And a lot of that looking at, did they move through COVID? Was there some home hardships and that? Are they, um, doubling up with family members now in Rock Island and that? But we have a huge increase in that eighth grade population this year. And just watching that and then supporting the high school in that and meeting with them regularly on looking at the discipline.
There was a pretty significant decrease in both in school and out-of-school suspensions from the first and third quarter.
Yeah.
Which would trigger that, my speculation is that at the fall, you know, quarter of the beginning of August. People haven't been at school for so long.
Yeah.
Just readjusting, being with the peers.
Yes.
Is that a fair assessment?
It is a fair assessment and we also look at the fair assessment fourth quarter. Fourth quarter, our last five to six weeks of the school year, we do see an uptick of some behaviors that happen. And so we sit there and we look at what additional supports do we need to put in place for, for our students during that springtime? Right before we're about ready to leave the school year and that.
That terrible.
It, it is that. Five weeks. Doug, would you have anything to offer in regards to anything like if I. Which is spring and just fourth quarter in that?
I'm just kind of reiterating with, uh, the standard we're talking about. We are seeing, uh, huge improvements like you pointed out, Mr. Rowell, from first, second to third quarter. Uh, but then you do like when it, when it does get warmer, as the last four or five weeks of school, uh, you, you traditionally see an uptick. But we're hoping to keep the momentum going where incidents are continuing to get more and more.
All right, with those kids in ninth grade that have any issues, do we have a pass in junior high, also in elementary with the same issue?
Some of them, but not all of them, no.
So it's sparking when they get.
No, it does spark. I mean, we right now in the trend and discipline that I'm seeing right now. If we know that we need to put in some, support metrics with sixth grade girls groups. And we also have that, um, eighth grade, some girls in that. So we know we need to look for some additional supports with girls right now.
For these last five weeks, like we said, it'll come up at the end. We have anything planned for that? Now that we know it's going to spark.
So I will tell you right now, just working with the, um, deans at the high school and that, I've been meeting with them weekly. Just reviewing a lot of the discipline that's coming up and they're down contacting me when they're looking at those decisions of this incident happened. You know, typically we may have said, oh, this is a ten-day suspension, walking them back and looking at the discipline in those incident infractions in a different manner. And then helping support and getting kids the support they need, either with the counselor or social worker that is tied at the high school. Or those outside community outreaches and that. We have a great partnership with Robert Young and we have SaaS workers in all of our buildings and just getting them the support they need. Plus, you know, uh, we have a voice group going on at the junior highs and that. So just getting the right connections for the kids as well as just one of the most important things, just stressing to the admin. It's just those relationships with families and that, and reaching out to them and letting them know right away when incidents are happening. Not waiting till we knew this has been happening and now this incident has happened and now we want to put a heavy stipulation on it. And parents are like, why didn't you contact me here when it first happened versus now? Thank you.
So we're just gonna move down through, um. Through the report, which is, uh, I think we're probably down to the end of priority two. We scroll down. If this priority two was around. I'm sorry.
There's no other.
Right, right. So we're gonna, so we're gonna scroll down and actually, again, when you get a chance to just see that. The academic piece will return for fourth quarter. We'll, we'll be into our map assessments and such, so. Scroll down to last priority area three, you can get a chance to, uh, again, see there were just a few areas in ensuring financial integrity, uh, area. That now, um. Have moved to green and really the only change is their payment completion and update of, um. Continuing to meet and exceed our ROE facility compliance reports. The annual inspections have been completed, uh, we shared our, so three fourteen, so they went around all of our schools and done that piece. The completion and update of the ten-year life saving report, um, we're still working to complete, uh, that piece. We're working with, um, mega architects to begin those surveys in March. So for fourth quarter, you'll definitely see, uh, the changes that may occur there. And then with the facility maintenance plan, it's been updated to show estimated project costs. There was a question, I would request to have that information, um, carried out through twenty-twenty-nine. So I do have, uh, an updated document, uh, to show, uh. Potential costs and projected costs through twenty-twenty-nine, we're creating individual separate tasks to show that. Our recognition status is a number of three point five. And so at this point, um. There's, there's not many more changes with third quarter. Or your academic changes, information will come in these last quarters from, when assessments are completed. So, uh, again, I'm not sure if there's any other questions from the board. This will be a time that if you had questions about, uh, third quarter strategic plan report. And it's standard pieces you've seen, uh, over the last couple of years. We just want to continue to try and give you updates as they come readily available. So fourth quarter, uh, some information for us to discuss, be, uh, shared there.
With that, we will entertain a motion to approve the strategic plan quarterly report as presented. Also.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion on the matter? Roll call, please.
Tracy Q.
Yes.
Dave Rockwell.
Yeah.
Gary Rowe.
Yes.
Terrell Williams.
Yes.
Megan Wilson.
Yes.
Mike Mather.
Yes. Onto operations, letter B, draft equity statement. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the adoption of the draft equity statement as presented. Can you motion?
So we'll.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Discussion on the matter.
Well, uh, again, uh, this is my piece. Um, what I'd like to, uh, share with you, what you're seeing here is actually the final draft of an equity statement. Um, where the work has been done back in, uh, December of twenty is when, um, uh, the, um. Equity committee was created, uh, from referrals from our district leadership team. Put together, um, an equity committee to, again, just begin to look at processes and procedures, but also as we move forward. To help us to get access and opportunity in our district. And so, um, work began on an equity statement. And I know it's been, uh, a year in, a year in the works. Number of months of working with, uh, our great team, uh, various, uh, staff members and community members. That, um, in, that helped us put together this equity statement, which is in alignment with our strategic plan. Um, I, again, it wasn't going to be a, a large presentation tonight, although, um, I had Holly create a few slides simply because. The equity statement has been shared with the district leadership team for feedback. It's been shared with the community for feedback, shared with my superintendents, um, parents, students. It's been shared with the community for feedback, shared with my superintendents, parents, students and teacher advisory councils to get feedback. And we actually even held one of our committee of the whole meetings to discuss the equity statement in its entirety and completion. And so with respect to tonight, while it's not going into a whole other presentation, but the comments that I continue to make about the equity statement is it is closely aligned with the core values of our district. And what those core values mean to our district is that, you know, they set the foundation for how our organization operates. These are the shared basic principles that capture our district's values. And we hope for them to be embodied and demonstrated by every employee that works for us. So aligned with that, this equity statement is saying that this is what we want to internalize and embodies our district. I will say that I would think that if anyone uses this as a checklist, and I know we oftentimes talk about accountability, are things happening or not happening? But we really tend to get in and try and use a checklist process to see what is the district doing, what is the not the district not doing? I want us to continue to look at the equity statement as saying, this is about who we are, our core values, wanting to be a community and regional asset, wanting to provide equitable, safe, inclusive and welcoming climate, wanting to celebrate and embrace diverse backgrounds, cultures and perspectives. And so with that, get a chance to see on the, on the slides here, the members that work through this process. But also what I asked Holly to do was just give a few examples of some of these things that are already taking place in our equity statement. This is not a brand-new document with all the brand-new things that the district or individuals have to start doing. A number of these things are already taking place in our district. Whether you look at the changing conversations and welcoming attitude that gets created in several buildings and some of them get a chance to just hear in the Washington cafeteria. But more importantly, we began to reach out and, you know, bring the community into our school system. Here, you know, T-shirt Tuesdays became a big thing at the high school. I went and bought my fifteen off of a website so that on Tuesdays when I can remember and I know where I was at boarding that I get a chance to be a part of that welcoming community. And then you'll also get a chance to, to see some of the performances here at the Black History Month program at the high school. But again, it's reaching out to students, reaching out to community. We could have pictures of the one hundred career day up here with all those that came in. You could also have a couple of samples of what's going to take place this summer with bringing in the summer programs that will be serving the students. So with tonight, the equity statement is a culmination of what we expect everyone who works in our district to embody and internalize. Therefore, you know, I'll end by saying if there's any questions, please feel free. But it is my, like I said, my recommendation that we approve this as our district's equity statement that will then, we'll get a chance to roll out into all of our, all of our buildings. It'll be a piece we get to roll out over onboarding new staff members. It becomes a part of the opening of the new year and moving throughout the year to remind everyone that we're all about access and opportunity and meeting the goals and needs of all students. Regardless of, you know, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender, class, race. We're the most diverse school district in the Quad Cities and the state of Illinois. And it's a strength for us. And this equity statement is just continuation of our work in our cultural competence work and being culturally responsive teaching individuals. So with that, I'll take any questions? I didn't bring my team tonight. I'm sure that fifteen of those, fourteen or fifteen of those individuals would have been here. But again, right now, it lays with the board to, we ask to approve this as our equity statement. I don't have a question, but I have a comment. First, I want to salute the members of the diversity team. It's difficult work, it's sensitive work, and I think they did a really fine job. I do have one suggestion, I'd like to add two words to it. In section two A, committing to overcome sociable, connective, cultural, neurodiverse and language barriers. And then in section four A, encouraging parents and community members to differ racial, cultural, neurodiverse and language backgrounds. Reason being, that's a very significant issue in our district. We know that we have a high number of, a high percentage, and it's growing, students with mental health issues, anxiety and depression. And also consistent students, special ed students, ADHD, learning disabilities, autism, a whole range of things. And to ignore that population in the statement is a serious mistake. And I think, I think that is that. And we have discussed it at the open forum that we got earlier. And I'd like to encourage the board to consider the addition of that word in those places that I suggested. And you know, the hardest part when you have these conversations, I think it was said, said on the board floor at the same time too, is that, I know when you just say all, sometimes everyone doesn't take all as all. We want to make sure that we're inclusive of everyone. And I know how difficult it is when we start naming specific groups. It's so easy to forget one. So again, we're definitely always open to, this is a living document. It's one that we know will continue to, you know, be updated as we move forward. My whole thing would just ask that when we say inclusive, we mean all groups. And that was a real difficult part of conversations, making sure that you don't forget someone. And continue to add more people on, sometimes forget others. So your points are definitely well taken. I have nothing to say, it wasn't as, an act of omission, it was just overwatched. And I just think it would make it explicit, would give it the weight that it deserves. So we should just talk about the percentage of mental health issues in the network, percentage of students with mental health.
With students with special services, we're at eighteen percent of our district in that, in total. Mental health, I would have to look at, I don't count that percentage.
Sure. And that's hard to get your hands.
Yes, exactly.
Eighteen percent with special students is a significant slice of our population.
Other discussion on the side of?
Nope, I really agree with Mr. Rowe's statement.
I just want to encourage, I know the high school has a team working on equity and doing some really great things, which I think was a big reason of getting the hundred, or hundred professionals in. But just encouraging all schools to, you know, now that we have a statement, you know, just really using it and doing, making improvements because there is always room for improvement, room to grow in every single area, even if it's just one little thing. And like Dr. Lawrence said, it's not doing necessarily more, but just getting better at what we are here doing.
So moving forward, if this document has been brought to us for approval and any revisions down the road would be subject to additional approval by the board then? I assume any revisions to it?
Well, I mean, again, when we update, we update records and such. I think because this was the initial creation of a document, it's going to be representative of our district. You know, I guess you could almost look at it like policy, press policy. There are some things where you just may change a word or change a footnote or what have you. So again, I know that the Equity Committee would have no problem bringing this forward as needed.
I too would support Mr. Rowe's recommendation to approve this statement with the two neurodiverse additions in there. As he pointed out, are there any other discussions or questions on that revision? Mr. Williams, anything from the internet?
Yeah, no, I've, I've been very vocal about this document in the past, so I don't really have a lot to say tonight. Other than the fact that I'm happy that it's here. I hope we don't, as a district, don't pass this statement and then stop or rest when it comes to this, this subject matter. So I'm encouraged that we're finally to this point. And look forward to integrating this into everything that we, that we do. I would agree with Dr. Lawrence that, you know, this is a statement. We haven't moved past this and gone to a policy or anything of that nature. So if the board is looking to be more involved in this going forward, we need to advance this statement into some sort of policy and probably live in that lane than to tweak, tweak a statement here or there. So that would just be my suggestion.
Good. All right, properly moved and seconded, we'll have a.
One quick question then, are we voting as the statement as presented or as I suggested?
I wouldn't.
Okay, great, thank you, sir. Thank you, man.
Mike, just to clarify, there was a, there was a motion in a second to approve the draft as is. Are we now, is there now a motion to, to approve with the suggested changes?
Correct.
Or did one modify their original motion? I just want to make sure we're good on this.
I'm with you on that. So at this point, we would entertain an amended motion. Does that sound okay to approve the statement as revised during these discussions with the two insertions of neurodiverse as referenced by Mr. Rowe?
We'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. Properly moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Tracy Pugh?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Mike Mather?
Yes.
Thank you.
Onto business finance, letter A, teach, train, thrive, professional development. It is requested and recommended the Board of Education approve a professional development contract for service with Love Your Classroom, Crystal Lake, Illinois. And the amount not to exceed $1,400 head start funds will be used for this contract.
So we'll second.
Properly moved and seconded. You know we want to hear about it. Go ahead. Otherwise, you would have wasted your time.
And I apologize, in the memo, I think I put plus travel expenses. I'm not sure if that, if I put that in the agenda document, but it would be plus travel expenses, which we anticipate to be about $415. It's local, it's Illinois, but I just wanted to make sure that.
That's included in the mission to the $1,400?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, that would add.
That includes?
Thank you.
Yes.
It's hard to hear, I'm sorry, Matt, here.
No worries. It's hard to hear up here.
Thank you. Sorry.
You just want more information. Yeah, correct, okay. So we have, as I did my presentation a couple of weeks ago, we've talked a little bit about the increased need for our student support in the classroom. Hence the Head Start early childhood mental health consultant that I was hoping to, hoping to get through the office at Head Start. So I was given this person's information for professional development training. I had some of my staff who work at Reba said, attended the training back in January, highly, highly, highly recommended. I contacted the speaker and got some information, spoke to her on the phone for about an hour. She gave me a breakdown of everything. And the purpose of it and the goal is to be able to give the teachers some more hands-on suggestions, ideas for working with some of the more challenging behaviors in the classroom.
And the good news is, is that multiple facets of our district were all on the same page. So Ms. Sanders and Mrs. Fore were all in conversation with the same individual. So it all lined up that this worked out in partnership with our student services program as well. So we'll be able to offer it to the entire staff at Head Start and assist with some support service personnel as well.
And just to comment on, as the district representative at Head Start, I continually impressed by the work.
Thank you.
Sometimes under very difficult circumstances, so I'm all favorably.
Thank you.
And just so you know why, why we ask for you to come up and talk, the memos that are provided to us, they're not public.
I understand.
It is really just to let people know a little more.
I didn't bring my note card or prepare a sheet, so you got what you got.
Yeah, 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 really, to celebrate what we're doing.
Yep, thank you.
And Mrs. Sanders and Mrs. Fore had also experienced this, so just worked in great alignment.
Yeah, perfect.
So Kathy, I have a question. So this, so it's just going to be for Head Start and then the student services? If this goes well, like, I mean, you've already used it a little bit, but you know, doing this bigger thing. This is something that we could see maybe if it goes well with the whole district, every school?
Everything is possible.
Okay.
Yep.
So I just know that this type of thing, every single school needs that support and wants it. And to find a good professional development for that price is going to be, I think, really beneficial.
Absolutely.
And we have a properly moved and seconded motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yep.
Tracy Pugh?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Dave Rockwell?
Yep.
Mike Mather?
Yes. Business finance B, Head Start non-federal share partial waiver request. It is recommended the Board of Education approve to submit a waiver to request, a waiver request to the Office of Head Start, Department of Public Human Services for partial reduction of the required twenty-five percent non-federal share for the Rock Island School District Head Start program in the amount of $170,927 for the grant period July one, twenty-one to six, thirty, twenty-two.
And the information on that is that part of the requirement for the Head Start grant being that it is federally funded is that each of the programs have to have either services or donation of goods for twenty-five percent of what the grant total is. Our grant total is just shy of $3 million, so we're expected each year to have twenty-five percent of that. It's called in-kind slash non-federal share. That has never been an issue up until the time that COVID started. So prior to that, we were able to make that work, being in the district of the buildings, having the support of the district has been a huge help of that as well. This is the second year actually that the waiver is being requested simply due to COVID and the inability to meet the number that we need.
Has this been routine for the other Head Start programs?
Yes, this is, this is actually something prior to, I believe last year was our first year that we applied for it. This is our second. And prior to that, in speaking with other directors throughout the country, they had actually submitted the waiver previously as well. There's multiple waivers that you can submit for, for different things. So that was our first time needing to submit the waiver last year. I'm hoping some things will get back on track and we won't have to do that again.
Other discussion on the matter? Properly moved and seconded, motion on the floor, roll call, please.
I'm so sorry, I didn't get the motion.
I still.
Make motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Take your pick.
Okay.
Dave Rockwell?
Yeah.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Tracy Pugh?
Yes.
Mike Mather?
Yes. All right, business finance C, recommendation for Longfellow electronic marquee sign. It is recommended, it is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education accept a quote for a new electronic marquee sign from Science Now in Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $24,924. Project has been budgeted in the operations and maintenance for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, discussion?
Yeah, I think generally when we do something like this, it's sort of like the playgrounds. The district is actually supplying the signs for them instead of them raising funds to get it. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So how many of our schools have raised their own funds to get their own sign?
I don't, I don't know, Mr. Rockwell, I'd have to go back. But I know that when I first started here, that was a lot of how it was being done. It is part of sign replacement, marquee sign replacement is part of our long-term plan. So this project, Longfellow, we actually started three and a half years ago. But the pandemic put a halt to production of any type of electronics. So it's now just coming back to the forefront. And then we have, I believe we have six schools left. And then we have, I believe we have six schools left to complete. And then at that point, it'll be a cyclical thing where every 15 years you'll be redoing it, so about one a year at that.
Is it, is it possible for you to figure out which of the schools have used their own?
Yeah, I believe so. I could, I could go back.
I don't want to keep something forward.
Most of the administrators will know, UG Field, I know, raised their own funds. We paid. Those were through SIG. Richwood, we paid for. We redid the entryway. But we need to take care of Washington, Edison.
We have to take care of that.
Yeah, Longfellow. So there's several of them out there yet.
Again, my thought process is if we end up having two schools raise their own money and we put them in the other, and well, whatever we got, maybe we should look at reappearing them in some fashion.
Sure. In fact, those are probably ones that would be up to be replaced relatively quick. Would be my guess, because I've been here 12 years, it was done before I got here. So those are probably ready to be reviewed. Yep.
So, so Bob, just to clarify, the remaining schools are on, their, their replacement is on the maintenance plan for those signs?
Yes.
Okay. And since, since Dave brought it up, does that include playground equipment?
Yes, that is on there as well.
Okay.
Both hard surface and play equipment.
Okay, I'll take a look, because I, I know at least one school to include one that I have children involved in are, are looking at raising funds for those specific things. So if the district is going to take care of it, then we can devote those funds to something else.
Sure, yep.
Just have to check the timeline, Mr. Williams. Yeah, it's a school, they might be over 2029, remember we're going through 2029? Just kidding, we'll take a look at, we'll, we'll take a look at the actual, and I'll make sure that the, the, the board gets the most updated copy of our instruction, our facility maintenance plan, so you can see the dates. So this is scheduled out.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Like I said, we, we set the precedent, so good luck, is all I can say, so. But I, but I think this is a good thing and, and something that is long overdue for, for these schools, so.
Other discussion? Have a properly moved and seconded motion regarding the Longfellow Electronic Marquee Sign. I'll have a roll call please.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Dave Rockwell?
Yep.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Tracy Pugh?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Mike Mather?
Yes. Onto Education, A, Amendment to the Rock Island School District 41 Graduation Requirements. It is recommended the Board of Education amend the Rock Island School District 41 Graduation Requirements from 24 credit hours to 22 credit hours, beginning with the class of 2023 and beyond. I'll entertain a motion, so move, second, properly moved and seconded. Dr. Ruckerberg is poised to approach the podium.
Just any questions? We, we did present in full detail last month. But again, I know there are some thoughts around if this moves forward, what's the next step? And the next step really is first and foremost, communication. Making sure we communicate effectively and accurately to all stakeholders, to parents, to students, and to staff. That this change does not mean you get out of school at noon, it does not mean you graduate as a sophomore. This change means, just like it is right now, there are chances for you to get 28 credits and a large number of our students graduate with 28 credits, even though only 24 are required right now. It says to students, 22 will now be required, and you'll have even more opportunities to explore other things if you'd like. In addition, for those students that have a little bit more of a challenge, you have more time in your schedule to credit recover those as we're looking at what that means to not just stick solely with our current credit recovery options, but to expand those as we continue to work in the multi-tiered system of support district-wide.
I still think this gives us an opportunity to do some really special things, and I'm hoping that we do.
Me too.
So with all the new things that we're talking about doing with this, how much of that will be ready for next year, for 2024?
That's a great question. I don't have that answer for you tonight. We have a lot of good planning still going on. Our high school multi-tiered system of support team is working with our consultants on scheduling and rearranging some things and opening that opportunity. So we're hopeful that we will have a more strategic plan for the services students need when they're failing classes, rather than just stick them in front of a computer. We plan to have something ready for the next school year, but we don't have that ready today. In addition, the survey that the high school administration did put out to fifth graders to fifth to eighth? Fifth to eighth did show some of the, the information from them. So one thing that just happened to align miraculously is the barbering class. So some of the top results from the survey, Jeff?
Yeah, so barbering cosmetology actually finished second in the survey results. So that was great that we were able to kind of fast forward that process, I guess. And first was computer science and technology. And so Dr. Ruckerberg and I have already been working with a couple of our business slash technology teachers to kind of explore that during, kind of during COVID, pre-COVID. And now we're, we're having those discussions again to see what classes we need to offer in order to have another track. So which is CNA, welding, culinary, and things like that.
And so another piece of that good news, would you share about barbering for next school year?
Yeah, so like, I think it was shared, I can't remember, who this, from the DLT meeting. But yes, so the Area Career Center contacted us and said the only area school that had people sign up for that was Rock Island High School students, so we're moving that to the high school. And so barbering will be offered at the high school next year. Looking for a classroom with a sink and some of the environments that, that need people, we'll figure that out. And so we will have that at the building in the fall. So that, and that was, like Dr. Ruckerberg said, that finished second in the survey, then went up to fifth, eighth grade. So that, that is happening next year. And then working with our business department and figuring out, you know, hopefully the following year, we can expand the computer science.
And what's nice about the barbering class is it kind of gives us a chance to pilot that in our own high school to say, hey, now that you're not at the Area Career Center, is that something more students will take? And if so, how do we then bring that on like we brought on welding and nursing? At that same tune about the computer science coding technology piece, we've been working again in that bi-state group. And that's one of the many meetings I attend on all kinds of different opportunities. I, I wish we could just begin them all tomorrow. There's a chef opportunity, there's just so many incredible opportunities. We just need people, more meeting time and, and courses put in place so that we don't start something that the students get half of because we weren't quite ready.
Am I right to say that we're not going to have paid internships for CNA?
Yes.
Six or eight have signed up?
Yes, we officially now have five. So we do on signing day that Dr. Lawrence shared about, April 20th at Waterfront Convention Center, we will celebrate five students signing on for welding and with a partnership in John Deere, Crawford, and possibly a third partner coming in. And then we do have a partnership with Unity Point and Friendship Manor. We just don't have the students placed yet, but five students that will be placed in either Friendship Manor or Unity Point for a CNA paid apprenticeship program, starting in the summer.
Other questions?
So next year, we have, I know we were talking about having a class to help kids who are falling behind. Will we be ready for that next year?
We will in some fashion, yes. I can't tell you what that looks like today, but we currently have classes, they're called labs, but we want to tighten that up. We want to make them more strategic and more structured.
Yeah, so I just, I just want to make a comment on this. When we started this process, I was, I was very against lowering this number, just because of optics, perception, et cetera, et cetera. And I've since come to believe that we're not dropping it low enough. And I, and I, and I, I plan on to support this. I've gone back and forth about whether or not I'm going to support this tonight. Because again, there, there are still a lot of next steps that need to occur. I still think, think we are, we are placing some things on students that don't necessarily need them for whatever reason, take your pick. But I just hope that we continue to evolve this in a sense that, that, that 22 number doesn't stay the current makeup of credits or classes that are required to graduate. And that continues to evolve as, as we develop some of these next steps with regards to creating these tracks for students. So, so again, we're not, if you want to go IT route or you want to go a CNA route, you don't actually have to get 26 credits to do it because we're, we're saddling you with classes that you may not necessarily, you know, need. So I, I look forward to, to the continued evolution of, of this process and what, what, what those 22 credits are made up of. Because I do think we, we need something above what the state offers, but I just hope that ultimately, if a kid is, is in that 22 credit, what's the word, range, that they're leaving high school with more than just a high school diploma. A certificate and apprenticeship, a pathway into some trade school after post-secondary. Not just, here's your high school diploma, good luck. We really haven't given you any real skills to go into the real world. Our high performers are going to go to college, we know that, they have the structures, they're going to continue to have the structures. We produce some of the most high-performing kids in the state. Those are not the kids that I'm worried about. I'm worried about the fringe kids. I'm worried about the kids that are going to get us from an 82% graduation rate to a 95% graduation rate. And I don't want that rate to go up without giving kids something with that rate. And so I, I will be very vested in, in this conversation going forward, just FYI. Because being away has made me realize in, in my research of some of the things, this is something that kids, kids need. And it's a testament to the work that we do and the work that the district and the administration does. Because I think there's some frequent notions that we, we go into these things with, with, with our minds made up. And this is, is a prime example where I feel like I've done a complete 180 since we started this conversation. So, so kudos to, to, to everyone involved in educating myself and educating the public on, on some of the things that are centered around this topic. So, thank you.
Mr. Williams, thank you for those comments. What I'd like to also inform the board and the public on is that in the past, the 24 credits had to be credits in the school and credits that we aligned to specific curriculum standards. And the state of Illinois is now shifting a little bit to where some other states are in work-based learning. So welding and CNA, if they're here part-time, then they get credit for work-based learning as well. So that's what we're hoping to also incentivize students, is that it doesn't have to be in the classroom for you to get some of this credit either.
I just wanted to again, thank the graduation credit team. I know that, you know, credits and all that is a big deal, but I think we're in the right direction of, you know, doing what's best for kids and providing as many opportunities as we can. So awesome job, and thank you for your efforts.
And a big kudos to Dan and Carmen who are standing up here with us, but they were instrumental leaders in this process.
Carmen's surveys made it happen.
Good, good deal.
Other discussion on the item? Right, motion is properly moved and seconded, roll call please.
Tracy Pugh?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Mike Mather?
Yes. All right, that is all of our regular agenda items. We do have an executive session to discuss contract negotiations. So with that, I will entertain a, there will be no action upon these steps. Thank you, Tru. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to move to executive session.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, our roll call.
Gary Rowe? Dave Rockwell?
Yeah.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Tracy Pugh?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yeah.
Yes.